Good evening. We're gonna go ahead and start our meeting. Sorry, I'm a little late. I was doing important things like showing off pictures of grandchildren. We're all six feet distance up here, so we will either wear masks or not, but we feel that we're distanced. So, the school board welcomes comments from the public regarding items that are on the agenda. Non-agenda items will not be discussed. We found it best for commentary shortly after the board has been presented the individual topic. The board may or may not respond to your comments tonight. Public should approach the podium, be recognized, state your name for the record. You'll be given three minutes to give commentary. About 30 seconds before the end of your three minutes, I will give a small tap with a gavel. After your three minutes has elapsed, I will ask you to surrender the podium. I would request that you speak in a normal tone of voice. If you yell into the microphone, curse, or make denigrating comments toward the board, you will be escorted to your seat. I need a motion to approve the agenda, please.
So moved?
Is there a second?
Second.
Aye. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We have consent agenda. There are three items on that. Are there any questions about the consent items?
Yeah, are we vote, is that going to, are we approved of those consent minutes? Is that what you're asking? Or those are, or are we gonna have those in the closed session? For example, personnel on there.
These are for approval.
These are for approval.
Okay, then, yeah, I have a problem with that.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Then, no, I, I'm not, I'm not in favor of that.
Okay.
So, for, for personnel, I want, I'd like that to, to either be moved to, to the closed session for discussion, or removed to a different time.
Did, point of order, did you bring this problem up with, with anybody at, at the board office before tonight?
No, I'm bringing it up right now.
Is that in the form of a motion?
Yes, I, I move that it be moved to, that section 3.2, be moved to the, to the closed session.
Is there a second? I, I will second that. So, any further discussion?
I'd suggest we go ahead and, and vote.
Well, we have a motion and a second.
Okay.
We should vote upon it, and I will take a roll call vote.
Nay.
Aye.
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 Okay.
Sorry, Mike, I forgot about you.
Okay, we're gonna move 3.2 to closed session. The other two items, are there questions on that? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay. Unfinished business, COVID-19 protocols and guidelines, Mr. Triplett.
All right, you have in your board packet our reentry plan. This has been discussed over multiple board meetings. We have taken multiple surveys since the spring. Our most recent survey, the results as of August 7th. Our parent survey, we had 1,668 returns. We asked the question about returning to school in person or returning to school not in person, which would be virtual school. Our parents, it's 68% of those said they would prefer in-person school, as opposed to 32% stating that they would prefer virtual setting. We also asked about face coverings. 1,224 stated that they would, their student would attend in person with a face covering, which is approximately 73%, as opposed to 444, approximately 27% said that they would not attend with face covering. Our staff survey, we had 548 returns. Those stating that they preferred to work and teach with our students in person was 422, or 77%, and 126 of those chose to not be in person. They preferred virtual, which is approximately 23%. Our staff, in regards to face coverings, 70% or 382 said that they were comfortable with masks, as opposed to 154, which is 30%, said that they were, preferred not to wear face coverings. Also, in that survey, we, we talked a little bit about transportation. Our survey results indicated that 55% of those surveyed, on the parent's side, that were bus-eligible, that's 1,278, said that they would, indicated that they would find alternate means of transportation and would not take advantage of the district-provided bus service. Which, I don't know how you look at that, whether that's a good thing or a bad thing. It's a, I just hope that they have reliable transportation, and, and not trying to put anybody in a bind, but it really will lessen the crowded, overcrowding of our buses. So, that will be a good thing, that we can hopefully social distance a little bit better on our buses. The reentry guide, and from the surveys, I think from the very beginning, when we first surveyed, we were at about 92% of our parents wanted in-school learning, in seats. That was six weeks ago or so. Our, our more recent activity of COVID in our county and our community, I think, has heightened awareness of that issue with our families, and that was obvious in our last survey that took us back down to just under 70% of those felt comfortable. So, I have about 40 pages of teacher comments that I've read through, and the board has read through. They are, obviously, all over the place. I, I want masks, I won't, you know, I don't want to come back without a face covering. I don't want to come back with face coverings. Different grade levels of face coverings. I want in-person school, we have to be in person. There's no way we can go in person, we need to be virtual. The blended is the best option. Anything else is, it won't work. Forty pages of, all over the place. And, and that's good, that we, we have those opinions, and we share, we feel comfortable sharing those, and for those that participated in that, I greatly appreciate that. That has helped guide us through this process. I have been meeting with the area Pettis County superintendents and the local health department for months, through virtual meetings. We have tried to stay consistent with county schools, but that is somewhat difficult. The size of our school district, as opposed to the other schools in our, in our county. So, we've, we've, we've tried to do that, but that has created some challenges, and we won't be exactly the same. I think most of those schools plan on in-person school as well, and, and that's what I'm recommending tonight. I would like to have some discussion about that, what that looks like, and, and the pleasure of the board, whether we, we do a five-day-a-week, or whether we do a blended. It will be my recommendation that we do a five-day-a-week. Depending on what hour of the day, and what article I've read, or who I've talked to last, that can change. It, it changes all the time. I, I've, I've struggled with this decision. I don't know if there's a right answer or a wrong answer. But I feel like kids need to be in school. I feel like, what worries me most, I think, is that educational gap that, that we work really hard to close in this school district. We have teachers that are, and administrators, that are just phenomenal at, at working to close that gap, that, that our minority students, our socio-economic disadvantaged students, closing that gap between our high achievers and our low achievers, and, I just can't say enough about what we do. And we can't do that virtually. We haven't trained to be a virtual school. We haven't studied, we haven't worked at it, we haven't practiced that. If we do virtual, I'll be the first to tell you, I don't think it's very good. What we did in the spring was not great. It was the best that we could do, and I applaud all the efforts of everybody, but in my opinion, it wasn't very good. And in five months, we've had to look at that. It's not like it's gonna be great now, it's just not what we do. So, my recommendation is to come five days a week, option one. Option two, I think, is a, is a good option, but there again, our students are in-seat two days a week, and virtual three days a week, grade six through 12. Our elementary will still come every day. I think that the age with this virus, I think we're a little, little safer there, but I also have, have staff to consider as well. We have a large number, I had that somewhere, forgive me, but we have 715 adults that come to work every day in our district as well, and, over, I think 280 of those are over the age of 50. Eighty-five of that, 285 are over the age of 60. Seventeen of those, I believe, are over the age of seven, 70, and one of those, it's not me, I look like it these days, but, is over the age of 80. So, I have to take that in consideration as well. Our substitute shortage is critical. Highly concerned about that as well, because if our staff starts getting ill, you know, we, we've had a substitute shortage, it's no secret. We've had second grade, you know, we can't fill a second-grade position, so this classroom joins this classroom, and we all pile in, and we make it work. Well, with what we're trying to do with this virus, we're trying to keep this 20 separate from this 20. So, if we have a positive case, we can contact trace, and maybe a few have to go home in here, but this class can still continue business. But if we don't have those subs, we combine them, now we possibly have 40 kids that we have to contact trace. So, a lot of concern there, but, but in my good conscience, I just, I can't recommend anything other than five-day-a-week school for our kids. I think it's important that we get back to school, and give our teachers a chance to do what they do best, and, and they're very, very good at it. Take any questions or comments.
And that's five-day-a-week, everyone wearing masks?
Five days a week, with face coverings. And again, like I, like I explained at the last board meeting, I, I think with the CDC guidelines, with contact tracing, and, and this is not a Pettis County thing, this is every school district, DESI has a flowchart that they've put out to follow. It's all the same thing, every school district across the state. I haven't talked to one superintendent that's doing anything different than that. If you are, if everybody is in a mask, you're considered low-risk, and probably will, will not have to quarantine, where if you are not in masks, you will have to quarantine 14 days. So, I, I would recommend face coverings for all, when six-foot social distancing is not acceptable. Like, now, you know, if we get into classrooms and we can spread ourselves out, pull that mask down. Nobody's a fan of the mask. I'm not. No, I, I haven't talked to one person that says they love this. This is awesome, I should've done this all along. Those conversations don't happen, they're, they're awful, they're no fun, they're, they're all of that. But, but it's, it's important for us to, to continue, you know, if we want to go virtual, then that's where we're headed, because it won't take long before we have those cases and everybody's quarantined. Not to be the downer, but that's how I see it.
So, on page 12, the flow sheet, down that bottom right-hand corner, it says, "Patient, a student may attend school with daily screenings." Does that involve symptoms and temperatures, or?
Those are at-home, we want at-home screenings. You know, we, we don't have the manpower, the abilities to do all those screenings at home, so, based on what we decide tonight, our next communication with our families, we'll talk about at-home screenings before their child gets sent out the door for school that day. Temperature checks, those kind of things will, will be discussed. And just making sure, we, we can emphasize enough that if you don't feel well, adult, staff, or students, that you, you have to stay home. We have eliminated our attendance incentives, we, and that's different, it's, it's a shift from what we've done. We've really worked hard at getting kids to school, and, and we've incentivized our staff to try to make sure that they're there every day because of our sub-s shortage, but we need to go away from those, we need to really drive home the fact that if you are sick, or you are feeling sick, you need to stay home.
Dr. Sharp?
Yes?
Yeah, I've got a prepared written statement I'd like to read, if it'd be okay now?
Sure.
When school let out in May, I had high hopes that surely we would not be in this position we're in today. I tried to maintain an optimistic, be optimistic during the months of June and July, and I have supported a choice model. I can no longer say I can support a choice model for the school reentry. We've learned more about how COVID-19 affects young children. We've learned how children between the ages of 10 and 19 spread the virus at least as well as adults do. Children under 10 appear to transmit the virus less often than adults, but researchers wonder if this reduced risk will not be negated when the elementary students are placed back into a classroom environment. And these are, these are from a study of South Korea, of 65,000 people. Over the summer, we've seen way too many people disregard expert recommendations, that we continue to modify our behaviors. We have seen the subsequent rise of COVID-19 transmissions. We are now in a red state, a red county, and a red city. Given our current condition, and considering Sedalia 200's mission statement that says we shall provide a challenging education in a safe environment, I know it's not ethical or safe to force thousands of our, thousands of our educators and students back into the in-person setting in class to conduct classes. We should avoid a disaster. We do not, you do not pursue a course if it could lead to a disaster. The conditions in Sedalia are worse now than they were this spring. I've been a professional for over 30 years, safety professional for over 30 years, and it's my professional opinion that we need to approach the community partners to provide daycare for those parents that absolutely need it. Let our teachers be professional educators, let them tend to their families, too. We have a community problem that requires community solutions. We should pivot to virtual instruction and continue to ask for grace. We have a no-risk option available that Mr. Triplett and his entire team have been diligently preparing and training for over the entire summer. Now is the time to pivot to that optional, virtual option. In the plan, under the blended, we have the kindergarten, or pre-K 5 students going to class physically every day, but yet the, the 6 through 12 go two days a week, and then virtual three days a week. Our schools, we've, we've done a really excellent job over the years of maintaining class sizes, and when we need to build or add, we do, we've been talking about a new elementary, but our schools, they're, they're pretty good size, they're, they're large, so pre-K through 5 attending in the blended option, I don't agree with. I think we're making a mistake starting off going to full classes five days, five days a week. Just recently, they just published that in the last two weeks, over 100,000 kids have tested positive for COVID-19. Year-to-date, we're up to 380,000 kids that have tested positive. We have teachers that have pre-existing conditions, as well as teachers that have children with pre-existing conditions. Staff members have elderly family members, friends, and caretakers. And as Mr. Triplett was saying, you know, greater than 17%, 17% of Sedalia's population is over 65 years of, of age. So, I think we need to start off with the virtual, and see how things continue. We're seeing that schools are starting up in person already, and they're already shutting down because they've had numerous cases of COVID-19. So, my recommendation would be that we do virtual first, and then we modify the reentry plan for blended, so the pre-K through 5 don't attend every day.
Any other comments from the board?
If, if somebody can unmute me, so that Michael can hear it.
Oh, I can hear you.
Okay, all right. Michael, I appreciate your research. Your research is sound. It is written from the standpoint of a plant-safety person. Just, just so we know, do you know of any industrial plants, either in the Sedalia area or Springfield area, that are not masked?
I don't know about the Sedalia area. I would say since they've gone to a mask ordinance, that they are wearing masks. I know, from people I've talked to, Stanley Black Inductor uses masks. Most of the industries in Springfield, because of the mask ordinance, are using masks. And then, they're also saying that even though if you're over six feet, you still need to, need to wear the masks unless you're working totally by yourself because of the automization of the, the particles. My biggest fear, and people aren't gonna like me saying this, but what we're doing is we're making education the meat-processing industry. Our kids are gonna be close together. Different industries have put plexiglass shields and barriers up to try to help with that six-foot distancing, and we've said that we're not gonna do that, that kids are gonna feel like they're in a prison, kids are gonna throw things over. So, the way that you're looking at it right now, it's not much different than the meatpacking industry, where you got everybody side-by-side, shoulder to shoulder, especially walking down these, these hallways in our, our crowded schools.
What I'm gonna say is, I, you know, Michael's, Michael's, you know, research and background are sound. We do have a problem. However, we need to go with option one. I think what's going to happen is that we will start off with option one. If we start running into some problems, it may be a good idea to shut the school down for a couple of weeks, and then go with, that'll give us time to, to go with the virtual option for the, for the rest, at least, of the semester. The blended option may work, and some of its components may work, but there are extensive studies that the people need to be going back to school. Every, every professional thing, every professional study that I've been, I've been reading, and it's difficult, I've had to read a lot of them, every one of them have emphasized the mental and educational benefits of going back to school. I think it is expected of us. I think that we will have to mask. If we have people who are not compliant with masking, who say, "We're not going to wear masks regardless of anything," we may very well have to go to a virtual program, and I, and I think our teachers are going to need a crash course in at least learning how to do what they're doing virtually, as well as in-person. I've also been tagged, somebody tagged me to serve on the advocacy committee for Missouri School Board Association. Several of the revolution, of the resolutions that are going to be coming up before the delegate assembly at our virtual meeting, yes, our meeting got canceled, and it's now virtual, will consist of, of greater training and planning for no more snow, snow days, no more reason to be at home and not receive instruction. But, we are dealing with children here. As time goes on, they, you know, we had people give us scare stories about people where, you know, terrible things will happen if these kids wear masks. I would submit to you that the mental, and emotional, and physical problems these students are going to have will be much worse if they remain at home. So, for that reason, I would suggest we go with option one.
Yeah, let me say one more thing real good, real quick. It's good that school districts collaborate and work on things together. I've read and spent hours and hours and hours looking at school reentry plans all across the country, but very few people probably realize that our school entry reprogram, reentry program reads identical, almost word-for-word, to Otterville. Otterville school district's what, 250 kids? We have over 5,000? So, I, I just don't think that, I, it's not, it's just too crowded. Our, our schools are too big, and they're, they're too crowded. Wouldn't be much different than, you know, Bothwell having the same program as what a, an industry might have. There, you know, each one has to be tailored and, and different.
Michael, what are the Springfield schools doing?
They're doing a blended, and K through 12, they're going two days a week. Wednesdays are, the schools are shut down so they can deep clean, and then, two days a week are virtual, so they, they've started off with a blended.
Please keep track of that for us. Some of us here have people, I've got people who, I've, I've got, we've got classmates that, that work there. I have, I have one client who, whose daughter is a music instructor down there. They still do not know what's going on. They supposedly were gonna find out at 8:30 this morning, but I don't know, and you probably won't know until you see, see the Springfield News-Journal tomorrow morning. But, and, and I'll agree, circumstances may change between here and, here and, and the start of school, and also that we're gonna be starting school a week, a week later. I appreciate your comments, though. I, I think we know the heavy risks that are, that are going to happen, and you have helped educate us to that. I thank you for that, but I still want to go with option one.
I would just comment that there are a lot of districts, you know, we met, I met yesterday with the new conference that we're in, with superintendents, athletic directors, building level admin, and, and they were also all over. The Columbia schools are gonna do a blended, Jeff City Public is in-person daily, Helius is still up in the air, they don't know. And I can't blame Otterville for copying what we did, I think it's pretty good.
I, I agree with Michael that about 10% of the cases are kids. I mean, if I had to pick one, I would, I would do the blended. The reason I feel that it would be okay to have the K through fourth grade there is, I, I get a daily podcast, it's COVID updates, various speakers. There's a cell receptor in the nose called ACE2. Kids up to age 10 have roughly about a third of what adults do, kids 11 through 8- Kids 11 through 18 have about two-thirds, and then it picks up till about age 25. So our younger children are not quite as at risk for contracting it, although I've personally diagnosed it in a four-month-old. So it's out there. You know, we would be spacing out the high school students if we went to a blended program. But still yet, there's the, you know, what Mr. Triplett says about the emotional, trying to catch up, psychological things that, and I won't disagree with giving it a try to go every day, but I would, you know, if we, if it fails, I would still like to try the blended and see how that works. And the thing we don't, I don't think what we really know is, will all these efforts at school have an overall impact? Are they going to be on their traveling soccer team, you know, their baseball team? Or, I don't think we know that. So I, I think we should maybe follow our superintendent's recommendation, give it a go. If it doesn't go, then we're going to have to decide if it's going to be blended or virtual. I know my daughter, who's quite bright, Dean's List attorney, she hated virtual learning. She just hated it. So, you know, I think that's what we heard the last time we had public comment, that I don't really think anyone wanted the virtual learning, although from a safety aspect, I mean, it's probably the safest thing as far as health is concerned, but all these other things I think outweigh it, that we ought to give it a try.
I would say that, and I don't like to get into statistics on this because it's all very new, and I think you can bring up numbers and statistics to prove your point, whatever side of this you're on, but data is that we've had 44 students, 44 kids aged five to 18 test positive for this in the county July 1 through August 5, which I'm not a math guy, but to my figures is less than 1%, just based on the 5,100 kids in our school. So that's not even considering the number of ages throughout our county, so.
Say that again, what was the percent?
Forty, I think it's less than a percent. Forty-four, I figured it out of 5,100.
Forty-four students in our district have tested positive.
It's 0.8%, 0.8%.
I think the research has shown.
Is that all kids in the county or?
That's just, I just divided that by our, our student. That's all the kids in the county. Forty-four in the county.
In the county.
Age five to 18.
Could be Sacred Heart kids, Otterville kids.
That's all of them.
That's all of them.
I think most are Sedalia, but, so I just divided it by 5,100.
I think.
The denominator could be even larger.
Absolutely, and it is larger, yeah.
I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, the research is, is that kids, especially 10 and under, do not catch COVID-19 unless they've got something else perhaps wrong with them, and then it's, it's deadly. But if, but the problem with them is that there's a lot more that's concentrated in the nasal passages and upper respiratory tract, and they, they can't catch it, but they can sure spread it and they can sure transmit it.
Well, and one thing to remember is these little kids have been pretty well confined over the summer. They haven't really been exposed to large groups, so that information may all change.
No, I, I think it was, it was for, for kids that had actually gone back or so to school, plus toss in some data from the various summer camps that have been out. And the summer, the summer camp data showed you that even, to make things even more fun, the infamous summer camp in Georgia that, that had so many people sick, they'd even required those kids to test negative to COVID-19 and have those test results in hand, I think, when they showed up at camp. So previous test results are obviously not a, not going to help you.
Dr. Sharp, if we could, we've heard from three board members. I'd be curious to hear from the other four and their thoughts or comments.
Just listening to what, all the comments tonight, I go back to reading all the teachers' comments, and majority of them want to be back in school. They want face-to-face. They want to be with their students and see their students, you know, excel. And I'm not a virtual person because I don't think you can excel like a student has a potential if he's face-to-face with his educator. So I'm probably going to say face-to-face with a mask, five days a week.
Barbara?
Okay, I'm going to take this out. And I'm going to agree with Kenny. My gut instinct tells me face-to-face with masks, five days a week. And I want to qualify that by saying, because, let me say, I know you all have had many sleepless nights over this, and quite frankly, so have I. And I want to qualify it by saying, we do have to make these students and families understand in any positive way we can that just because we're taking care of what we need to take care of here at school, that doesn't mean it's free rein when they're out at home. That they have to continue these precautions on and maintain safe, healthy habits and protocols. Because if they, and I think if we put it, these kids want to be back in school, their parents want them back in school, and I think it needs to be as quantified as it can. If you don't do what you can, then whatever we do does not make a difference. We will be back. You know, we will be back in virtual. So that, you know, I would like to, you know, just add that in there. But I, and I do think the second thing I'm going to say, and I've said this frequently lately, I think, and this is me, but I think a lot of this fear and uncertainty is because we have not made a decision yet. We've discussed, we've discussed, we've discussed. I think now we have to do something and be prepared to pivot, to alter if it doesn't work, but I think we've got to do something. And I say, you know, make the choice and go for it.
Thanks, Barbara. I want to, I want to commend your, your recommendation. I think five days a week is, is what's right for our students. I think that, that's, that's what people in the community have been relaying to me. And I, and I can also understand, I mean, there's also been plenty of people that relayed saying, "No, I don't want to do that. I want to, I want to, I want to go do a virtual option as well." And one thing I can say to that is I think you've done a good job of giving those people that are saying, "No, I don't feel comfortable sending my kid back to school," that there is a virtual option. And, and I think that's, and I think that's great, and I think that's to be commended. I think the five days a week is the best, best thing for learning. And though I'm not a, a fan of masks, I also understand where the school district's standing in regard to the health department and, and what guidelines we have to follow. And so with that, I mean, the one thing I am concerned about is little kids, and I think we all are, how are, how's that going to work? I was happy to hear you say, you know, and I know the guideline is, is we can get them six foot apart, yeah, you can have a break from the mask. And, and one thing I keep hearing throughout this discussion is, if we follow these guidelines, even if someone does come down with COVID, that doesn't mean necessarily that everybody in that classroom is going to get quarantined. It's if we're not following those guidelines. Am I correct? That's, that's correct, right?
Absolutely.
So, so with that, I am, I'm definitely, I, I'm definitely, I definitely have some hesitations in regard to, here, let's put a, put a mask on people, but I will go with option one to get kids in school full-time because I think it's the best thing for them. And I think most, most importantly, the emotional piece of where our kids are. I mean, we, we just had kid, we just, we've had multiple people overdose from drugs. Just had a student this last week, I mean, it just hit my heart. I had that kid. And I'm going, what if we, I don't, you know, you always wonder, what could we have done different? But these kids need to see a smiling face, and I think they, and I know our teachers will, especially when they're in front of the class, you know, if they've got that distance, they can take the mask down, they'll see a smiling face, they know those teachers love them. And, and Ms. Triplett, I know you love our kids, you know, you love our community, and I appreciate this, and I am all in favor of getting our kids back five days a week. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm all for back to school. I, I know people that are for or against masks. I'm not even going to go there because I know everybody has their own reasons. But what Barbara said, the fact that we can somewhat curtail what happens in our buildings, we have no control over these families and we shouldn't have on what goes on after school on weekends or whatever. And so that's why I feel us having the mask mandatory to enter the buildings is, is the right thing to do because we do have vulnerable students and faculty. And so if it's, you know, these kids are out and about with families and, you know, that's their choice of their lifestyle when they're not in school, we have to protect also what goes on in our buildings during the day. So I'm all for, let's bring them back, let's end with the mask.
Is there any commentary from the public? I'm going to say mask, discussion of mask is off the table. Because that's, masks are going to happen. If you would like to talk about five-day-a-week, virtual or combined, we're quite welcomed here, but the topic of mask is off the table.
I've heard a lot of talk.
Ma'am, your name is?
My name is Vicki Clark. I have a ninth grader coming into the school. Not only do I have a ninth grader coming into the school, I have a child. That ninth grader is in a wheelchair. He requires a pair with him the whole time. How is him and that pair are going to be nine feet, six feet apart during that day? I've heard a lot of talk about, well, this child, this child. I've not heard anyone mention these special need kids, that if my son gets this, it's not something he gets over. He can't get over this. That's the same as when he was in school in eighth grade. If he got sick, they, if there was anything going around that school, they had to call me and let me know because I would have to keep him home. Because he will get sick and he will end up in children's mercy, and he will be fighting for his life like he was in March. I'm concerned about sending those children back.
Absolutely, ma'am, as we are too. And Mr. Powell is, is our Director of Special Education, will handle those on an individual case-by-case basis to make sure that not only your child with health concerns, but the, the health concerns of all of our staff and children.
Well, he rides a bus, he's in a wheelchair.
Sure.
He requires somebody with him. Those kids on that bus aren't going to be six feet apart, and he can't keep a mask on. And I know you said we don't want to discuss the mask. Well, in my case, I have to think about the mask on his face all day long.
Right.
I have to think about him being six feet apart from people when he will not be six feet apart. And I don't hear anyone mentioning those kids. It's, it's, well, this child wants to go back because they want to do sports. I'm thinking that's not important. I'm thinking we need to think about what's best for our children. And speaking off-topic, I just got a phone call today at 4 o'clock this morning that my niece died of coronavirus. So it is real.
Sure.
She was 34 years old.
I'm sure there will be some students who have IEPs, that there'll be exceptions, but the vast majority will still need to wear masks. Thank you. Any other commentary? I would entertain a motion.
We got, there was somebody else.
There's a whole row of bright lights. It's kind of hard to see out there, folks, so, sorry.
Madison Phillips. I am supposed to be going into the eighth grade at Smith Cotton Junior High, and I have been in this district since I was in kindergarten.
Madison, hon, could you speak a little louder into the microphone for us? You can pull your mask down if you'd like, hon, you're six foot. Thank you.
I am going to be in eighth grade this year, and I have been in Smith Cotton since I was in kindergarten. I love this school. I went to a small school and I, I love going to school. I used to not like to go to school, but school has been a place for me to get away from home and from life. And when spring break started, I lost my grandpa.
You're doing good, keep going.
Keep going.
And not being able to go to school was very, it was very hard for me. I wasn't able to surround myself with people that love me and I love them, and I connect very easily with a lot of people, and I consider myself to be a teacher's pet. I have loved every teacher that I have had, and I form very close bonds with those teachers. And the younger kids, in my opinion, do the same thing. They connect with their teachers very easily, and they, their teachers are big influencers in their life. And not being able to go to school in person, for me, just makes that not as much of an option. And it doesn't form those bonds. And the few friends that I have also impact my life very strongly. And not being able to go to school, I feel, will impact a lot of kids in their personal lives. School is a getaway for a lot of people from my experience, and not being able to go to school, I feel like will raise depression and suicide numbers more than they already And I think that option one is the best option. I tried virtual school after school got canceled for the rest of the year, and it was very hard for me. I just feel like staring at a computer screen and trying to talk to other people when they're not in front of you is very difficult. And not being able to form those bonds is really not such a great idea, in my opinion.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Could I have a?
Now, Dr. Sharp, one more real quick thing. I think it'd be good.
Michael, just a second. Sir, if you'd like to speak, you need to approach the podium, please. Go ahead, Michael.
I think it'd be good that the school district's sending out some guidelines on masks. The ones that have the respir, the vents in them, they found that they're not as efficient and they allow the atomized particles to, to leave. So I would say that we don't have any masks that have any exhaust ports in them because they, they're not efficient.
Those are okay if you cover them with another cloth mask, but like you said, I mean, that's just letting viral particles ride on out. Thank you, sir.
Howdy. My name's Glenn Shoemaker. My daughter, she's getting ready to go into the 11th grade, son's going to go into the fourth grade, and I've talked to them. I haven't put words in their mouth, and I know you guys don't want to discuss it, and I, I get that. They don't want to wear masks, and I'm not going to force my kids to. My son is asthmatic, and my daughter is just rebellious. But, I mean, if you guys take this option off the table where it's a must, then I must find another source because I'm not going to send my kids to a school where they take their constant. then I must find another source. Because I'm not going to send my kids to a school where they take their constitutional rights away. And that's how I feel. I mean, when you take their First Amendment, Ninth, Fourteenth, Fourth, Fifth, I mean, what's next? I mean, I'm not going to force my kids to do something that they themselves don't want to do. I have had the opportunity to have some time off, taken some college courses myself at Lynn State Technical College or State Technical College of Missouri. Long as we stay apart, we don't have to wear them. I mean, I think these should be options, not mandates. If it is a mandate, I would rather have my kids do virtual. And if not, I'll homeschool them. I mean, it's a choice. It's not a mandate, I think, so.
Sir, are you, first off, you have a son who is going to be an 11th grader, and he's-
Fourth.
Fourth grader.
My daughter will be going into 11th.
Okay. She, regardless, she will still have the option of, if she starts at the very beginning of the school, she can take, there are virtual courses available, and these people will be happy. If she cannot, if she is up front with them and says, I don't want to wear a mask, they can fit her out with virtual courses that she can take and be, and, I don't know if you want to leave her at home by herself, but she can do that.
My wife's at home.
Oh, okay.
She has, she's disabled.
Okay.
So, I mean, you know.
Your son who is in fourth grade, Mr. Powell, how would we handle that?
A lot like Mr. Triplet mentioned earlier, with the special education students will handle those cases on a case-by-case basis. We find out the reason. You know, if it's a medical reason, why student can't do that, we would talk to the families on an individual basis. If it's like you mentioned with your students, just do not want to, and you don't want to ask them to do that, we'll work through that as well. We do have the virtual option that you've mentioned again, Mr. Gardner, so we do have other options to work through.
Well, both kids want to be in school. But, you know, Chris, they just don't want to be held back, or held down, or sit there and be forced, or be singled out, or bullied, or anything.
Page sixteen of our, page sixteen of our reentry document outlines the process with the virtual learning. It's on page sixteen.
I didn't get one of those. I'll-
It's on the website.
Page sixteen.
Page sixteen. It's called mocap virtual education information.
Yeah, we've looked at so far K through 12 and a couple of other good websites. But, I mean, I was just hoping that, you know, the kids could go back and return to normal, you know? And that's what they all are hoping, you know?
Sir, I want to say I completely agree with you. And I understand where you're coming from, because I'm on the same, I literally, I agree with you 100%.
Yes, sir.
I have three kids that are in elementary school and two at the high school. And the thought of sticking them in a mask all day, I won't do. Like, I'm on the school board, and I've already decided I'm homeschooling my kid, or, or I'm, or, but, hear me out. Or I'm going to send them to a private school where there's a little less, where there's more options. But the reason I'm saying, you hear me say, I still think I want these kids in school five days a week. I've got people calling me, begging me, please, Mr. Herron, please. And I'm going, and I also understand where the school district's at. It's a very tight space. If I had my way, yeah, I'd say, no, no masks, go to school full time. But I also want to be a realist too, because I mean, I'm also not a doctor, and I think we're all sitting here going, well, how do we weigh this safety versus not? And I'm just saying, as one dad to another, I say, go with your gut feeling. Do what, do what you know is right to do by your family. But I'm saying, from where I'm at, as a board member, I'm going to vote for this option one, because I want these kids back in school. And I'm just, I appreciate you coming up and saying it.
I agree. I mean, like I said, through the classes I'm taking right now, we set a few chairs apart, and everything works great. I mean, you know, nobody's been sick up there.
And I hear Mr. Triplet say that that, when that's an option, I know there's going to be teachers who will be, hey, you can get six feet apart, you can take the mask down. And there's probably going to be other teachers who are like, don't you take that thing off to save your life? And I think that's probably, you know, people are very sensitive. And I'm trying to, I'm also trying to be sensitive to this as well.
Right.
And give a little, because I know I'm going to give a little. But I appreciate you, sir.
The other side of the token is, we know kids aren't going to take and keep these things on. They're going to have them down here. Adults can't even keep them on. I mean-
Sir, thank you for your input.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Anyone else? Going once? All right. Can I have a motion on our return to school, please?
I'll make that motion. Five days a week. With masks.
With masks.
Option one.
I second that motion. Okay. Any other discussion? Matthew, why don't you start?
Yay.
Aye.
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 Michael?
No.
Okay. So we start with option one. Item 4.2, the assessment professional development manuals. We've seen these before.
We're just asking for your approval for the assessment manual and the professional development manual. What's changed was the goals. We've updated those per the request of last meeting.
Any questions?
Again, we're asking for approval.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Sir, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. The equity bank card agreement. Mr. Frey, Dr. Freyly?
Yes, brought this agreement to you guys last month, seeking approval this month to allow Equity Bank, which is our lender, to provide us with our purchase cards with no annual fees.
Any questions? Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Point of order, Dr. Sharp. I'm going to leave the room for a little bit.
Okay.
All right.
Items for decision, the Hall of Fame nominees.
Yes, Mr. Davis unfortunately is attending the funeral of his mother-in-law today, so is unable to be with us. We keep him and his wife Courtney in our thoughts tonight. The Hall of Fame Selection Committee met on July 27th, reviewed nominations for the Smith Cotton Hall of Fame. We had four nominations for athletic category, two for academic, and one for the activities. Hall of Fame, from these nominations, the committee selected four individuals to be inducted in the 2020, 2021 induction class. Selections are, for the athletic, Jeff Mays and Tom Munson. Jeff Mays is a class of 1982 baseball, attended Crowder Junior College, and then University of Nebraska, was a first round, was the 22nd pick by the Philadelphia Phillies of the first round. So played a little pro ball, returned to Sedalia. And all four of these candidates, what really hit home with our committee was the fact that that all four of these recipients have come back to Sedalia, stayed in Sedalia, and contributed to our community in great ways over the years. Jeff has coached at the high school level, at the American Legion level, and has been involved with athletics nonstop since he graduated and returned home. Tom Munson, again, is a class of 68. He goes in as a contributor to our school district and our athletic department through his many ties with our community and his outreach for numerous years. He has been a great friend to the Sedalia School District, and we're happy to have him in as a contributor. On the academic side, we have brother and sister. This is, I believe, Mr. Satin and I researched that, Mr. Satin researched that. And I think this is our third set of siblings that go in the same year, and our fourth overall group of siblings. The other group didn't go in at the same year. They went separate times, so. Ann Gardner is valedictorian of the class of 78. She went on to receive a finance degree from Mizzou. She just received a law degree for the University of Oklahoma City. She has spent a great deal of her career working with city government right here in our town. And Scott Gardner, as we all know, our fellow board member, since 2005, he has served as a Sedalia School Board Member. He was also the valedictorian of the class of 1976. He earned a finance and baking degree from Mizzou as well, and then went on to earn a law degree from Vanderbilt. He has practiced law in Sedalia since 1983. So we feel that all four of these candidates are worthy of this election, and I ask you to approve these four names.
So I'm in second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No. All right.
Okay. The school calendar for next year. I asked that this be brought up. This is our original calendar, and then we moved it back into August a week, when we didn't think we were having the fair. Then we moved it back, and now some schools are starting after Labor Day. So the question came up in my mind, do we need to move it up to the 8th of September? If we have good social masking in the town, we might have lower cases by the 8th of September than when we had the first. How effective our masking is going to be, no one knows. It's only started. It's going to be two weeks from Friday at the earliest before we're going to see a definite impact. As it said, I think a lot of the anxiety about masks and type of schools, we hadn't made a decision. You know, I really hate to wait another two weeks till our next board meeting. I don't have strong feelings one way or the other. I mean, most of the area schools are starting the week before we are. You know, we've been wishy-washy back and forth, and I just didn't know if any other board members had feelings about this or not.
I, of course-
I think it'd be good to move it back to after Labor Day.
And of course, I'm going to be just, I'd say go with September 1st. I really don't, you know, Labor Day weekend, like Memorial Day weekend, is probably going to be a hot, you know, that could stir things up again if it settles back down. I just, I just want so bad to get these kids back in school, have those four days for staff and students to get to know each other, just in case things go totally crazy after Labor Day. At least they've made some face-to-face contact, so. But again, you know, I can see why some schools are waiting until September 8th. I just don't think,
I think with people traveling and celebrating Labor Day, that our highest likelihood of closing schools is in the two to three weeks after Labor Day.
Right.
True.
So maybe getting a week of school in before Labor Day might be, might be good.
I think that parents have already made the, we've already, we've already put that number out there. People have made their plans. I'm with you. And not only that, let's get them, let's get them back in school and make some good connections.
Now, again, I look at a bunch of different areas in different states, and there are areas and states that have started the masks. They have seen a reduction in the cases. Springfield's been into their mask ordinance for about three weeks, and they're starting to see a reduction as well. So by waiting till September 8th, the Sedalia masks will have longer to take effect, and we may have less cases that way as well.
I mean, this was on for a discussion. It wasn't on for decision. Unless there's strong feelings that we need to change it, I think we probably ought to just leave it where it's at.
I agree.
Agreed.
Okay. Scott, are you back there somewhere? All right. Can I have a motion to adjourn to closed session, please?
Make the motion to go to closed session with closed record and closed vote pursuant to section 610 slash 021, section three personnel, and 13 protected records.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Need a roll call vote?
Aye.
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 All right. We stand adjourned. Thank you all.